All right, welcome back to the JP Petersky Show here. An interview I've been looking forward to for quite some time. I want to welcome in Chris Latvila. Hope I'm saying that correctly, Chris, by pronouncing that correctly of the Pinellas County Commission. Welcome into the show. Really appreciate you jumping in here. And first and foremost, I want to establish you as the Rays fan that you are. Because I heard you do an interview yesterday and I said, this dude knows the prospects. He's been around forever. Let these people know how much you love the Rays and how much you love baseball. He's been around since the Esteban Gond days. You know what I'm talking about, right?
I remember going to the games and, you know, late 90s, early 2000s. And, you know, when we had a lead in the seventh inning and certain members of the Rays bullpen got in the game, the game was effectively over. And so, you know, the Lou Pinella days, you know, were a lot of fun. You know, the Quentin McCracken, Damian Rolls, Audrey Huff, the Hit Show. You know, Vince Namoli, of course. You know, and so I'm a Rays fan through and through. And, you know, the current regime of the Rays, you know, has the brightest, some of the brightest baseball minds in the MLB. You know, several general managers and in front office folks around the league got their start in Tampa Bay. And so, you know, when, whether it's, you know, the Willie Adamas trade when he was a throw in, you know, and he turned into who he was, you know, we fleeced the Mets. You know, you know, we have bright front office people. And, you know, I used to complain when we traded veterans. But now it's okay, well, we, we get Esack for 80s. You know, I'm going to keep my mouth shut because he's going to end up becoming an all-star. You know, somebody that I've never heard of. And so, you know, and Kevin Cash does a great job and turns in, you know, we get a new bullpen, it seems like every year and they just, you know, I think the Rays invented the opener.
Yes.
And, and now that's used all throughout the game. Even the Dodgers used it this year in the World Series and they have the highest, one of the highest payrolls. And so, I mean, you know, from a baseball perspective, the Rays, you know, are geniuses. You know, and they're really inventive of, you know, and I think really Joe Madden started that. You know, thinking outside the box and in 08 and, and the years after that. And I remember the 08 season waiting on the Rays to, you know, take a plunge in the standings and that never happened. And a lot of that reason was because of Joe Madden.
Yeah, best team we ever had.
Yeah, yeah.
By far. Well, we've established you as, as a longtime Rays fans. And, and I think what people probably need to know here is that you love baseball and you want the Rays here. But this is not the deal to get it done. It may not be the time to get it done with the Pinellas County Commission approving not $312 million, but $600 million with interest because you have to pay interest on bonds. And I, that's why I always say, you know, it's always printed as 312 million. It's not that. It's way more than that. And it's a lot of money. It's the most you guys have ever given anybody, anything, anywhere. And delaying a vote may not be a horrible idea. Just tell everybody where you are on, on this deal.
Right. Yeah. In July, at the meeting, I said, okay, if it's $300 million and we can do $10 million a year for 30 years, I mean, yes. If we, if it's $300 million and we can do $30 million a year for 10 years, I mean, yes. That's not how it works. With construction costs and all that, we have to front the money. And so we don't have that sitting in the bank. So we would have to finance it. And so the financing would be over 30 years would be over $600 million. So when you count what the county is contributing, when you count what the city is contributing, it's over $1 billion.
Public money.
That's before the land deal that the Rays are getting, that's separate. That's before that's even put on the table. And there's estimates that that's going to be in the hundreds of millions of dollars as well.
Yeah.
And so when you look at it from the totality and, and the reason that I gave for opposing it being one of two votes in July, and you can go back and look at the meeting, I mentioned two things. I mentioned the beaches and beach nourishment. And I mentioned the possibility of if we have a hurricane in future years, I didn't know that that hurricane would come a couple of months later.
Right.
And we had two of them. I mentioned the beaches and beach nourishment. And I mentioned the land deal as, as the two reasons. And I also mentioned if we could, you know, if it was just 300 million and not having to finance it, I would, I would have been a yes. And so I just didn't, you know, I'm, I love baseball, but you know, more important than that, I am a county commissioner that has to answer to my constituents.
And you've been vilified for this, and I think unfairly so. I'm not, I wasn't thrilled when it appeared you were trying to hold the Rays hostage to play in Pinellas County. Because I, I knew Bay Care Park wasn't ready for that and Steinbrenner was. And I think that's something you may have learned since then. And I understand it with the money. By the way, why don't you ask the Rays to do a ticket package where the people have to stay in Pinellas County? When they come to Rays games in Tampa, that would be a nice thing. Like it will give you a lower ticket price for your package. If you, if you book it, people are going to stay at the beach anyway, if they come to see the Rays, at least I would. If I'm coming from Boston, New York, I'm not staying in downtown Tampa. I'm going to the beach. But anyway.
The Rays didn't talk to anybody.
Exactly. I was, I was leading up to this.
And, you know, I, I go to whether it's Thresher's games or whether, whether it's Phillies spring training games. I've been to that stadium a bunch of times. I've never taken a tour of their, you know, clubhouse. I've never taken a tour of, you know, the baseball part of it.
Right.
So I'm not familiar with, okay, this is up to MLB standards. This isn't. All they had to do is say, hey, you know, this makes playing in Clearwater more difficult. I knew from being a baseball fan that in 2021, Dunedin had major league baseball games during the regular season. Yeah, that stadium is a lot smaller than Steinbrenner.
Right.
But, you know, my biggest complaint was we're using the tourist bed tax dollars to pay for the stadium. And if they're not playing in Pinellas, we're using up the very sources that we're not going to be able to recoup by them not playing here. And so that was my big complaint. And I also had and, and have concerns that the trap will be able to be repaired. And, and they weren't really talking about that either. And that's more of the city, you know, the city concern, not the county concern. Well, what, what happens if the Rays decide to play in Steinbrenner for the next three or four years?
Right.
I mean, that's, you know, 10% of the time that we're going to be financing this deal. And if they're not playing in Pinellas County, that's a big problem.
Yeah.
Because in the 19, like it was like 1994, 95, whatever year that that original contract use agreement was between the city and the Rays. Or the, the baseball team. It basically states that St. Petersburg has to provide a place for them to play. Well, now they don't have a place for them to play. So there's an argument to be made that the Rays could just say, okay, instead of repairing the trap, give us X amount of dollars. And okay, well, if that happens, they're not going to be in Pinellas County.
Yeah.
So, you know, it's my job to look out for my constituents, look out for our residents and our taxpayers. And so, you know, I'm not just going to say, okay, we'll go have fun in Tampa and, and, you know, I'll drive across the bridge and watch a game.
And the fact the Rays didn't come to the county commission, they're not coming to the vote today, I believe, right? I think I've, I've read that.
I mean, I, I hope they're there. They weren't at the last meeting. I, I hope they're there today.
Have you had any, have you talked to them recently? Have you had any contact with them?
Not, not particularly, no.
And is the, I gotta ask you this, what do you think's happening in the vote today? All right. And what would your vote be if you had to vote today?
I mean, you know, a, a no vote effectively kills the deal and I don't want to kill the deal. And so, you know, I, you know, I, I would be, you know, in favor of just delaying it and seeing, okay, because we have until March to approve the bonds.
Yeah. Well, that's, that's the other thing. The, the original deadline was March to approve the bonds. And, and here, and, and my, if I can bring Stu into this, he's like, I'm killing the deal now because we've got, you know, according to him. And by the way, I'm not going to take everything that he says and says to the times as gospel, because we've been fooled many, many times before. He's been very disingenuous about things. And, and so I'm not going to just going to take it on face value. How is it you can't go forward when the deadline was originally March anyway? That doesn't work for me. Does that work for you guys?
Well, you know, and, and you've been around, you know, long enough to know that he's used this tactic for 10 years.
Yes. I highlighted it well on my show.
I'm going here, you know. So, you know, and it's interesting that he always uses a particular reporter and a particular newspaper to.
Yeah, I've had issues with that as well. They don't, you know, I know Channel 10 sent some questions over there, Alvin Kloski. They're not answered. You know, we tried, why not do a press conference? We're talking about the biggest expenditure in the history of the county and the city. And we can't, we can't have the, the owner do a press conference and be accountable to all media instead of just talking to one.
And I, I, I really feel bad for the position that the Rays are in.
I do too.
The fact that the trap was damaged. 40,000 houses in Pinellas County suffered severe damage as a result of the two hurricanes. The, the Rays are not the only business in town that was devastated by the hurricanes.
Right.
We don't go around giving a billion dollars to each of those businesses.
That's right.
And, you know, so I would expect, you know, them to come to the table and say, okay, the situation is different than it was. And, and, you know, I find it, you know, ironic that the county commission delayed one time. And he's saying, okay, they're, they're not good partners. When if you go back a year ago, when, you know, it's first starting, or maybe even more than a year ago, and you look, it was consistently delayed at the city council level. With the, and, you know, oh, we're having a meeting this week to vote on it. Oh no, we're pushing it back a month. Well, it wasn't because they were worried about the votes. I can give you that much. It was because there were people that were negotiating that wanted to add things to it.
Yeah.
And those people were not the city or the county. And so.
That was the Rays. It was the Rays asking for everything. Yeah. This, this has been called by people who have worked, you know, by former mayors and people that have worked in county administrating and have done other deals that have looked at the deal as the worst deal we've ever seen in the stadium. It's the smallest city municipality to ever give the biggest corporate welfare tax, a subsidy for a stadium ever. I mean, the deal is, is terrible. It's been terrible from the beginning, in my opinion. And to me, I just see a county commissioner who's standing up to it and saying, I love baseball. I want baseball to stay here, but this is not fiscally responsible. And put on top of it now, you know, an estimated $60 million in repairs. I've seen the, the pictures. It's way more than that. And that's by visual estimates, by the way, folks. That's not engineers getting in there and actually seeing what's there. This is going to be over, I'm saying close to $100 million. You're going to try and repair the trap and then blow it up two years later, three years later? And the mayor actually called this fiscally responsible? I don't get that. I don't get that. I know you met with the mayor yesterday. What, what transpired?
Yeah. I mean, you know, the mayor and I are on opposite political spectrums. You know, but, but I believe that, you know, he's an honest guy. And, and, and certainly he wants the Rays to stay and he's trying to keep the deal together. And, you know, it was a productive meeting. And, you know, I don't want to speak for him, but, you know, you know, I don't think the Rays are really talking to too many people in town.
Do you think they're trying to get out of the deal? And so, so Stu can take the real estate money, the huge windfall there of six, $700 million? And maybe sell the team? Do you think, it, it seems like to me, if I really wanted to get the deal done, I'd be number one, talking to Pinellas and saying, hey, sorry, we didn't talk to you guys, but here's the deal and why we had to go. And I'm sure Major League Baseball had a big say in that. It just wasn't the Rays. And he hasn't done any of that.
I think when, when you have tried to, for 10 years to say, if we don't get what we want, we're leaving town. And the, you don't show up to a meeting when they're voting to give you $300 million, well, actually 600.
600 million. I'll correct you.
And then there's another meeting and, and the county commission makes it clear, hey, we want you to stay in Pinellas County. Talk to us. And, and at the meeting that we had last week or week before last, you know, several of my colleagues said, we haven't talked to them. We want them to stay in Pinellas. I was not the only one.
Right.
An hour after that meeting, they had a press conference or a press release with the Yankees saying, we're playing in Tampa. I mean, that's not how you conduct business. So, I mean, if I'm trying to get out of a deal, I go to the newspaper and say, oh, well, they postponed one meeting, deal's off. Well, we, we still have three or four months to, to try to get something together and.
May I jump in here and say, and unfairly, in, in that report, by the way, and that, that whole article that John Romano wrote, it, it basically painted you as the villain, you as the villain. And you got death threats, so much so they had to arrest somebody. I hope you and your family are safe. That's just unconscionable. And there was nobody sitting, standing up saying, except maybe me, hey, wait a minute. It's not this guy's fault. He was a no vote to begin with anyway.
Right.
What are we doing? Why are we putting it on him? Come on now.
And, and for two years, they, the Times has written several times that, oh, by the way, the Phillies gave a political donation to his father, which was $10,000, political donation, not a person donation. They have never reported, oh, by the way, the Rays also gave his father a political donation. Those political donations total up to $30,000.
Oh, interesting. We didn't put that in the story?
No, no. And, and for two years I've asked them, hey, please make this correction. Saturday I emailed them, hey, please make this correction. And John Romano wrote back and said, I don't believe that this is relevant. I, I don't understand how, how him getting a Phillies donation is relevant to a Rays vote. But my father getting Rays donations is not relevant to me voting on a Rays stadium.
It's absolutely relevant, 100% and it's.
And then, and then bizarrely, in, in the same email, and I posted it on, online, he said, you know, you also didn't mention that the Rays gave a million dollars to the Tampa Bay Beaches Chamber of Commerce for hurricane relief. Well, I, I'm a Rays fan, but I don't work in their PR department. It's not my job to go on the county commission and say, hey, by the way, did y'all see that the Rays gave a million dollars hurricane relief?
Yeah. Yeah. Absolutely not. Do you, um, do you trust Stu Sternberg? I mean, he, he was sued by his, his partners. I read that whole lawsuit, you know, that's, it's full of a lot of bad allegations. And I've said this before on my program, if I was giving away this much money to a billionaire, I would certainly want to make sure that I'm dealing with somebody on the up and up and really has Tampa Bay and St. Petersburg as their, as something they want to champion. And at every, every turn, Stu Sternberg has said St. Petersburg is not a major league city. We cannot exist here. He's dogged St. Petersburg as, as a site for years, said he wanted to move to Tampa. And suddenly he got a deal where he got everything. And now St. Pete is a place to play. I, I think that's a little disingenuous. But he wanted to get the deal done. We've noted what a terrible deal it is for the taxpayers, something you don't agree with. Do you trust to do business with Stu Sternberg in this situation?
Well, Stu Sternberg and I have different priorities, I believe. And I've actually only met him twice, the first time being about a year ago. First time we, we met was at a social charity event and we actually talked about Rays baseball. And, and I was complimenting him on the minor league system that they've developed and how it was good every year. And then we've had one meeting about the stadium, but he's not who, who I talked to or dealt with on, on the stadium matters. And, you know, we have different priorities. His priority is to make the most money as possible for his team. You know, kudos to him. You know, that's part of running a business. He's done very well with the Rays. I believe that they, you know, probably turn a profit every year because of revenue sharing, TV deal, you know, things like that.
A handsome profit.
Yeah, yeah. And, and, and they, and to his credit, they have a competitive team, you know, regardless.
Yeah, but we'd all like to see a little bit more payroll. We'd all like to see that. And once again, today they were shown to, that they're third worst in the league in free agent spending in the last few years. Yeah. He has the money.
But they, they do the best with what they put on the field. They're a competitive product.
They do.
My priority though is I want the best deal possible for the taxpayer. And the best deal for our residents. You know, I would not put him in the same league as a Jeff Venek. You know, when it comes to community relations, I would not, you know, when, when he's no longer the, the owner of the Rays, he's, you know, not going to be a, you know, around in the community. He's not, you know, he's not going to be, you know, like even the Steinbrenner family. You know, they're active, you know, in Tampa or the, you know, Blazer family or, or, you know, people like that.
They've done a great job. Yes.
And, and so he has different priorities and I don't fault him for that. But his main priority is, you know, getting the most money as he possibly can. And, and so, you know, that, that's just, you know, his, his deal.
Well, how do you think this deal can be saved and be responsible to the taxpayers? Do you think the Rays would agree to put in more money or do this differently? And they, listen, there's, there's a huge amount of money available in this real estate deal that could be put towards the stadium. I know he's allowed to sell that. He could, he could literally sell it tomorrow to, to Hines for what it's really worth, up to six to $700 million. The other acre just sell the team and walk with the money. Like that's, that, and that's what we've heard that, that, that could ask, something I predicted two months ago, by the way. And the stadium would never be built. Do you think that's possible?
Oh, I mean, that's certainly possible. You know, and that's what some of our frustration was in July. You know, I, I have not spoken to my colleagues, you know, of course, because of the sunshine law. I, I saw a article this morning in the Times, you know, that talked about what some of my colleagues were thinking. And it does seem like, you know, some that were no's could be persuaded to yeses by doing something similar to what you said. And, you know, hey, you know, business is different than it was just a few months ago. We had two hurricanes.
Yes.
And, you know, it, you know, nobody wants to see baseball leave, but, you know, some of us that said this wasn't a friendly deal in July. Now, two hurricanes later, it certainly is not a friendly deal when we don't know what the Army Corps is going to do with the beaches.
And that money, by the way, I think another misnomer is that this, this money can only be used for stadiums and some other things, but it can also be used for beach renourishment and things, right? That money could be used for things that bring more people in. So it's something, right?
And, and, and we're currently in a fight with the federal government and the Army Corps of Engineers. Cause for decades, that, that was something that the Army Corps of Engineers did. Now they're not doing it. They're saying that residents along the beaches have to sign easements over, which is a private property issue that I'm not going to bore sports fans with. But that's something that's never going to happen, uh, because you have to get 100% of those property owners to do that.
Okay.
I believe that the federal government should do that. But if they don't, we're going to have to pay for that ourselves. And, and also FEMA has said, if you pay for it yourselves and a hurricane or any kind of storm comes, you will not get FEMA reimbursement. So that also puts us behind the eight ball. And.
And part of the reason you're delaying the vote to find out how that's going to pan out. And, and you have an owner that's saying, I don't care that you've had hurricanes. It's just like, like, no, you know, if you delay it, I'm out, I'm out, even though the deadline was March, if you delay, I'm out. I mean, come on. I mean, it's a little.
So the vote to delay was six to one. The vote to approve the project in July was five to two, five people for, two people against.
It's a reasonable.
To, to after the hurricane, the vote to delay was six to one. So you do the math and there's a, you know, several people that voted for the project, then said, okay, wait, let's, let's delay this because there are now variables that we don't, you know, we were not expecting that we need to have some time on. You know, and then you have Stu saying, oh, well, they, they're no longer, you know, partners and, you know, baseball may be gone.
So the bottom line is on this, Chris, if, if there was a renegotiation of this, given this, this, the terms and, and the fact that the trap has to be rebuilt, then that's another huge expenditure. I mean, is it, is it the most, is it the worst thing in the world if the deal gets scuttled? And, and I don't think they're leaving Tampa Bay, by the way. I don't think that, I don't think Major League Baseball is leaving the 11th largest market with the 18th largest market right down the road in Orlando. That's not happening. It doesn't fit their business model. They have a lot of national television contracts that are tied to that. It's not happening. And if the team did go back to Tampa and found a home there, your constituents would still be able to go to Rays games. So it's not the worst thing. I was in Atlanta when the Braves did that deal. And the mayor said, look, I don't have money for the Falcons and you. If you want to go to Cobb County, that's great. Fine. I don't have to pay for it. My constituents can still have the breaks. It's, and, and that has been a tremendous deal for Cobb County and the Braves. They won a Super Bowl using that money or a, a World Series using that money. So it's not the worst thing in the world. We want the Rays to stay and it's best for the area. And I've always said this, Chris, St. Pete and Pinellas, we're a family here. You guys have the beaches, the beautiful beaches that we love. That's why we live here. You have a beautiful downtown, all of the, you have the PGA Tour event that's there, that's unbelievable in Innisbrook. You have the Pelican, I was just there on.
Yeah, the Anacola.
The event, you have the Grand Prix that's there, you have soccer and that all works so great there to beautiful downtown. It's just, in my opinion, it's not the place for a baseball stadium because of the location. It's a, and, and build a convention center or a cruise port with that money and you'll get a lot better return, by the way. And you can still go to Rays games. That seems to me like the best alternative. I know you want the Rays to stay in St. Pete, but that's, that's where I'm coming from.
If, if they go to Tampa, I'm completely fine. You know, my feelings will not be hurt and it will save us a ton of money.
Yeah.
And, and I would be the first one that is shaking whoever brings them to Tampa's hands. And, and I would offer to buy tickets to go and see them. I just don't think, you know, a billion dollars to keep them in, in St. Pete is worth it. And, and if we're paying them, uh, they need to be in Pinellas. You know, that's been my whole argument. You know, whether they play in Pinellas or Hillsborough, if they want to play in Hillsborough, I'm, I'm fine with it, uh, full time. You know, if they play in Hillsborough while Pinellas County is paying them, that's another.
I get, and I totally get that as well. I just think, you know, if, if we looked at this from a regional standpoint, that's what we would do. And, and, and the constant in this whole thing, and people say, oh, Tampa doesn't have the money, Hillsborough don't have the money. They don't have the money that St. Pete did to give upfront. But in the long run, the Rays would make more money with the deal that Hillsborough offered. I think it's a much more reasonable deal for the taxpayers. It's responsible to the taxpayers. And Tampa could get it done. The reason it hasn't been done is the same constant, it's never been done. And that's Stu Sternberg, because he wants everything and gives nothing. It's always a one-way conversation. That's what I've heard from the people that have negotiated with them. I was part of the Rays 100 when we did the deal and we've constantly told there was no corporate support. That's a bold-faced lie. We had tons of corporate support. And so if there was new ownership and MLB forced new ownership, there would be a deal done within months in Hillsborough County. I, that's my opinion. And it would be best for the area and you guys could build a beautiful convention center and make way more money. You, you know, you think about it, it's, it's actually $2.4 billion cost to taxpayers, totally. You talk about the lost real estate deal, the interest on the payments, it's 2.4 billion to taxpayers in Pinellas. Yeah. And, and, and in the city of St. Pete. And you could sell that in the Christman plan for over a billion dollars. That's a $3 billion switch. And you'd have a much better downtown, you'd have a much better, and as you said, if you put this up for a vote in Pinellas County and St. Pete, what do you think the margin would be? I think it would be 70, 30 against.
Oh, yeah. Yeah. I mean, I was going to say over 60% against, but you might be right that it would be closer to 70. Because do I want a new stadium or Rays stadium? Absolutely. Ask anybody on the street, do you want a new Rays stadium? Oh, absolutely. Do you want to pay a billion dollars from your taxes or public funds for it? The answer would be no.
No.
And it probably, by the end of the day, it'd be over a billion dollars. And, you know, when you talk about them moving, show me another area in the country that has $600 million of public funds or more sitting on the table saying, okay, we're ready to have a, a. okay, we're ready to have a a sports team.
In addition to a one point five billion dollar relocation fee or one billion dollar relocation fee the owner would have to pay in addition to buying the team for two billion dollars.
Right, right.
People just think, oh, they're going to Nashville, they're going to Portland, going, no. And by the way, MLB has to approve that.
Right, right.
A move. And why would they, why would they do that to themselves? Take, take an expansion fee from themselves and just, oh, yeah, Stu, we love you. Yeah, go. That's cool.
And and the other owners would much rather have expansion than have another team relocate.
Yes, absolutely.
So, I mean, that's, and that's why he was, you know, literally laughed at when he wanted to do the split city concept with Montreal.
That's right. That's right. So, well, Chris, listen, um, I hope you and your family are safe.
Oh, yeah.
And and I hope, and I hope that, uh, you know, nothing comes of any of that stuff. And I hope people stop vilifying you or doing what your constituents voted you to do. Uh, and I appreciate you being bold enough to stand up for this and stand up for what's right because it's so easy to just roll over and do the wrong thing. And I appreciate your 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 courage in doing so and and speaking out about it. I do appreciate that. So, thank you.
Very much, JP.
All right, Chris. Appreciate it. Be well.